For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President, item number four.
A Democrat, she likes that one, so.
I'll make a motion to recess the commission meeting of the salary board.
Second.
My question Warren, second, my question Jean Greco, second, to approve item four, recess commission meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-third, is that on your board?
Second.
Motion by Treasury Department, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item three, the approval of minutes of the September twenty-third meeting, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
There you go then.
No, we're on the.
We're on salary mark. Oh, second that, sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item four on the agenda, to create the non-union full-time temporary assistant district attorney position, DA's office beginning November fifteenth, and ending December thirty-first, twenty-fifteen, four thousand per month, questions or comments? Yes?
Is this a new position, or is this replacing somebody?
This is a new position.
So how many assistant districts do we have now?
What?
How many assistants do we have now?
There will be two until the end of the year.
Wait, wait, I got a question. When does he actually take office?
January fourth, is it?
That's what I thought, so do...
I'm not sure.
We don't want to lapse, so we want it to be the thirty-first, or do we want it to be January fourth? I don't know how the calendar works.
What is the first Monday? The first is?
There's a weekend in there, isn't there?
There is a weekend.
I don't know how the days work, I don't want to lapse.
The fourth, Monday is the fourth.
Yeah, I thought it was the fourth.
Monday is the fourth?
Monday is the fourth.
We don't want to lapse, I think it should be.
They close the first and probably the second, so.
I say the fourth, I want to amend the motion to say January fourth. Midnight.
January third.
January third.
It'll be sworn in.
Sunday night.
It'll be sworn in on the fourth.
Okay, let's say January third midnight, does that make sense? That fixes it?
It should be two thousand sixteen.
Okay, the motion has been amended, to change the ending date to January third midnight. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further comment on the salary board?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to adjourn the commission meeting, or the salary board, and return the commissions, all in favor?
Aye.
Epstein.
Thank you.
Number five, you are Democrat.
I think we have a correction, just trying. The motion to approve the minutes of September nine, Commissioner Warren made it, Commissioner Warren seconded it, and seconded by Jean Greco also, is that correct? Or am I reading it wrong? I don't... Then there's a motion by Commissioner Jean Greco.
Right, there's the correction in here, that's what it was, but this is what the correction was doing.
But we still have two seconds, is that right?
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren.
On my honor, I understand.
I'll have to get that one ready. We can approve what's there from now on, then we'll...
We went through these things like a half a dozen times before we put them on the agenda to approve them.
I'm sure something got caught.
So what are we doing?
I'll second, approval minutes is listed now for some...
Second.
I have a question about that, we weren't able to make it to that meeting, and nobody was dismissed, nobody was hired, that usually some people have left the job, some people have been put in a job?
Yeah, that meeting was a very short meeting, it wasn't anything hardly on the agenda at all.
Okay.
We have the minutes, and they're not approved, and then, I don't know what this correction, it doesn't have anything to do with the minute.
I can't fix it right this minute, or we can fix it and ratify it the next minute. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number six, is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item six on the agenda, ratify in the cash disbursements, electronic payments, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number seven is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item seven on the agenda, ratify or approve the seminar requests and award payments, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item eight on the agenda, accept the resignation with regret for retirement for Betty Phillips, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item nine on the agenda, ratify except with regret the resignation of Joshua Hale, the sheriff, all in, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item ten on the agenda, accept with regret the resignation of Shianne Daniels from the maintenance department, with regret, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number eleven is listed on your agenda with the correction of January third, twenty sixteen, midnight, for the ending day.
Yeah, you know, I just thought of something else, as I'm reading this motion, it says four thousand dollars per month, I assume it's going to be prorated. So for the fifteenth, that would be two thousand, not four, for November, so let's make that clear that it's prorated, let's add the board prorated it. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Then I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item eleven on the agenda, now signing Robert Quine to the non-union full-time temporary assistant district attorney position, ending on January third, twenty sixteen, and prorated at four thousand per month, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number twelve is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twelve on the agenda, ratify the hiring of Jessica Mattis of Montrose to the full-time nine-one-one telecommunicator dispatch training, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item thirteen on the agenda, ratify the hiring of Matthew Higgins of the fifth of Windsor, New York, to the full-time nine-one-one telecommunicator dispatch training position, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, okay.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Motion to approve item number fourteen is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item fourteen on the agenda, accept the resignation of Brady Webster from the Suscano County Conservation District, effective September twenty-first, twenty fifteen, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number fifteen is listed on your agenda.
Did you say fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yeah, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item fifteen on the agenda, authorized commission to sign purchase service agreement between Suscano County Services for Children, Youth, and Kids Peace National Centers, from July first, twenty fourteen, through June thirtieth, twenty fifteen, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number sixteen is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item sixteen on the agenda, to authorize commissioners to assign the children child accounting and profile system, version of an upgrade between Suscano County Services for Children, Youth, and Avantville, and it costs us six hundred and eighty dollars, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen is listed on your agenda.
Yeah, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item seventeen on the agenda, to exonerate the Tax Plan Bureau from collecting Lincoln taxes for the recommendation Kathy Braddock on a property in Bridgewater. Questions, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number eighteen is listed on the agenda.
Seven.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item sixteen, eighteen on the agenda, to sign the creative information information system, twenty sixteen service agreement, this is for the technical support for the scale of the recycling center, cost of five ninety-seven a year, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nineteen is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item nineteen on the agenda, to sign the Thompson Johnson twenty sixteen preventive maintenance agreement, this agreement is for the Toyota forklift, Toyota clamp truck, it costs two hundred and forty-two dollars for the year, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty because I have questions.
I'm not going to second it. I am not sure it's lethal. Not somebody would have figured this out before it ended up on the agenda. We're going to pay for service providers for... I don't think so.
What this is, is Area Agency on Aging has not received any state funding, and they are not paying their service providers, which are providing services to the elderly in Suscano County, and they, without receiving some funding, they will not be allowed to continue services to the elderly in Suscano County.
I'm not trying to hurt the elderly, but I'm going to tell you, I do not believe it is legal, under the county code, for us to pay for some other agency's providers. If you're going to try and help the area of aging, I believe, the proper process would be to make a donation, and I'm not sure we can call it a donation, but for lack of a better term, assist the area of aging, and then they, in turn...
And that's what this is supposed to say?
Well, that's what it says, and we're skipping a very important legal point on skipping over the area agencies and paying for their providers, which I don't think we can legally do.
Right, this is not to pay the service providers, Area Agency on Aging will pay the service providers.
I don't know what this is.
So that needs to be changed, to say...
So what are we going to do?
Helping them out until we get, until they get state money to provide for our elderly.
So we're just assisting the area agency on aging, is it a loan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's going to kind of be like a loan, but I, and my other suggestion is going to be, before we confirm this, look, I'm in favor of helping them out, I just want to make sure it's done the correct way. And as I sit here, I'm not sure until I revisit the law, as to what the proper protocol would be to get this accomplished.
Okay, right now I'm going to withdraw my motion, that's on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to assist the area agency on aging, per the review of our solicitor, of what we can...
We just want to make sure we're doing it legally, so that they don't have a problem, and neither do we.
Per the view of the solicitor.
And I don't think we should wait two weeks to figure it out, to revisit it at another meeting.
So will you second that motion?
I don't want to second a motion that I'm not sure is properly worded.
Well, it'll be approved conditionally, won't it?
What's that?
Isn't that the idea, that upon approval from your solicitor, then it would be approved, so that we don't have to wait two weeks?
No, we're not going to wait two weeks, I'm just sitting here trying to think of how to... Let's table this for now, revisit it before we adjourn, no, revisit it before we adjourn today.
Let's skip over twenty at this time, and move to twenty-one.
Can I have a, can I make a comment? I was trying to understand this, so they haven't been paid for July and August?
Right.
At this point, and it's around fifty-five thousand or fifty thousand?
Right.
Now, what about September?
They haven't been paid for that either.
Haven't been paid for September, now we're into October?
Right.
And that's because there's no budget in the state?
Right.
Hasn't been approved?
Right, so all the people that are getting home meals or personal care at home, the elderly, are in jeopardy of losing all that care, unless people step up.
And it's the state's obligation to do this, so by the state down there not getting, doing their job, it's falling back on the local taxpayers to fund it, which I don't agree with. We let them to office to get this stuff done, they're all getting paid, every legislature down there is getting paid, and these people are going without, isn't there something wrong with that picture?
Yes, so then why don't they not pay the legislators too for the same money?
Well, why don't you ask them that, that's a million dollar ques, probably more than a million dollar question. If you don't think Harrisburg is upside down with Washington, there's something wrong. Now, the local taxpayers are funding this, we should not have to do that.
And is this the first time?
Although it's a worthy cause.
And is this the first time this has happened?
Yeah, it may have happened.
Back in the Rendell administration, it happened then too.
You always blame the Democrats, that's why it's not getting hot.
I think you had a comment or question?
The comment is that the taxpayers are already paying for this, these services by sending and remitting tax monies to Harrisburg, and these clowns are sitting there, thinking that they can just play brink and brinksmanship, and they're doing it.
Absolutely. Twenty-one.
Yeah, motion to approve item number twenty-one.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren, before I call Johnson and May Corneille as the weather-ready nation ambassador for Suscano County, questions or comments?
Could you define this, please?
Yeah, it's, uh... Yeah, basically what it is, it's working with the National Weather Service, and trying to be, you know, storm-ready, to make sure that we have all the technology in place, and making sure we have a relationship with the National Weather Service, to make sure that all the information coming down through, so we can be ready for any type of disaster.
Do we have a relationship now?
Not like this.
So now that we have an official ambassador, things, the weather will get better, or?
I don't know, it's not going to get much better this weekend, but, yeah.
The county lets declare storm-ready.
We are storm-ready.
Certification back in two thousand six.
Right, this is just another step in the process, it's gotten no cost to us at the county.
Now, does he have to travel somewhere because he's ambassador?
Does he have to go somewhere beyond our county?
As far as my knowledge at this time, no, everything he does is right here through the county. And everything we do on the National Weather is out of Bennington.
And you, you guys even have to learn that whole language.
Right. Twenty-two?
Twenty-one, all in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number twenty-two is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item twenty-two on the agenda, adopt resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty, for a community block grant, questions or comments?
What do you guys think?
Yes.
What is this block grant, can you explain a further this resolution, the block grant?
The community development block grant is an entitlement grant that the county gets each year, based on population, and this year is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and all activities have to either benefit low-income individuals, or a some of light activity, so there's some caving of low-income streets, there's some demolitions of vacant lighted buildings, and some housing rehab countywide.
So this is for this year, and this happened last year?
This is two thousand fifteen money that the state has just released the application for, so we're actually a year behind, we'll be getting it sometime next year, for two thousand fifteen.
And then, did you get a grant last year?
Yeah, two thousand fourteen, just came in recently.
About the same amount?
About the same amount, yeah.
All right, no, thank you.
Could, could the chair or whomever please explain what a low-income street is?
Yeah. The streets have to be surveyed, to determine if more than fifty-one percent of the residents are low-income, so door-to-door surveys are done by the municipality or our office, to determine how many low-income residents are on there, so as long as more than fifty-one percent are on, it would qualify for this funding.
I still don't get it, I thought the townships and the county paved the streets.
They can apply for this funding, as long as the benefit is to low-income residents.
The county doesn't, the county doesn't pave any streets, it's the townships and municipalities that do, and basically what happens on this money is, the housing authority sends out information to all the municipalities and townships, and says, do you have any projects that you would like us to look at, to try and use this funding that becomes available? And then it's the townships and municipalities that send information back to the housing authorities, and says, you know, we'd like to get this street paved, if it qualifies, or we'd like to get this home taken down, if it qualifies, and...
And based on whether that municipality is in a fifty-one percent poverty level or low-income level, they get this street paved, for the people in the fifty percent target, zero, that sounds equitable.
No?
And then...
If you make under, make under fifteen thousand dollars a year, you don't pay any taxes, if you make over twenty-five thousand a year, you pay a lot of taxes.
Welcome to there.
And then what about last year, was anybody, did anybody apply from the townships for the street work for home demolition, and is that funding?
Yes, it's about the same type of projects were done last.
And you say, and you mentioned these streets, what streets were approved because of low-income residents?
This year it's High and Vine Street in the borough of Susquehanna.
High and what's in it?
Vine Street?
Vine.
So there's literally a survey, people go out and survey, or you look at, I guess, the tax rolls, and find out how many people are, are low-income, and those neighborhoods are entitled to have their street paved.
That's correct. But that would be just in the, in the borough, what about out in the townships? Any townships?
Same thing, if there was a particular road needing assistance, we would have to survey the whole town.
And did anybody apply last year, that qualified?
Nothing, no streets and roads in townships, it was, and all the municipalities get the notice of this.
Bobby Joe, is that like Peck Hill and Millford?
Correct, yes, Peck Hill and Millford was last year's funding.
Peck Hill and Millford, was that in the borough or in the townships?
Yes, Millford Borough.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, okay, this time we'll do public comment before we go back to the last item.
Why don't we do the last item, first case of public comment on what we do.
Let's go, let's go back to item twenty. Item twenty.
Here, here's what I'm thinking. Want to verify these numbers, and when I read the motion, see why, I'll make a motion to assist the area agency on aging with paying for services for Susquehanna County elderly residents, I want these amounts verified, that they're, this is only for Susquehanna County, it seems like a lot of money for just a county, but just to be sure it is, upon determination of the legally acceptable protocol to accomplish the same.
I'll second.
Money's to be reimbursed upon state budget approval.
I'll second you.
I think that gets us where we need to be.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, are there any other questions? Hopefully, the people in Harrisburg will finally wake up and do their jobs, and will have a budget before we need to pay September, October, and November.
Yeah, good luck with that, remember we get off and doing our jobs.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, okay, okay, we will go to public comment now. Vera?
Can you give us an update on how the roads and the bridges are doing, and what's the latest, because I see also, other companies working on the roads, and do they have enough funding yet?
Definitely not enough funding, definitely not enough money being put into the system to allow for the repairs that should be getting done. Right now, they're in the process of doing twenty-nine, from the Gulf Coast down to Franklin Forks, and then the last road they have to pave this year is one seventy-one going out of Thompson North, there's a section there that's supposed to get done, I'm still trying to find out if that's getting done. The dilemma that we're running into is, I have a, had a meeting scheduled next week with the Northern Interior Transportation Committee, which Penda, of course, sits on, and they're unable to come to the meeting, because with no budget, the governor won't let them travel. So again, we're, you know, it's bad enough they're not passing the budget and getting the services done, but now, they won't even hold their obligations to attend the meetings and, and do their jobs that way. So, we're going to continue to meet with them, we have another meeting scheduled November sixth, I don't even know if that one's going to be done, it'll depend on whether they have a budget in place, and if they can pay for their travel or not, so we'll have to find out about that one. And then the push will continue to be more road improvements, but also to find out why Suscano County is not getting the type of road repairs done that other counties are getting. Most places you go to, they just don't keep throwing more blacktop on and blacktop, they take and mill it down, you know, eight, ten inches, and get back to a good solid base, and then put the blacktop back in, and then the roads last a lot longer.
But for instance, if you look at Six and Eleven down there, by Keystone College, and to going into the summit, have you seen how much blacktop they're putting on, and the job they did there? There's quite a difference. Why can't they just, why can't you set up some sort of a webinar with these people? It's possible it's cheap enough, and then you don't have to travel, they don't have to travel, and you still can accomplish a meeting.
And that's what's suggested, and we're waiting for an answer back from them on that. Again, it's government at its best, the higher up it goes, the worse it gets.
So you haven't been able to find out why we're not getting as much funds, or our roads are not as good at this point?
Well, what they're saying is, you know, their claim to fame is, is that there's this magic formula that they use in Harrisburg, as to how the funds are driven out and distributed, and it's based on population, and because of our population, what it is, you know, we get the funding that's adequate for our area, based on our population. My argument to them is, is, well, you may be doing it on based on population, but the road conditions and the climate has a lot to do on how the roads last and how they stand up, they've neglected these roads for the last twenty to thirty years, and have done nothing to improve the roads, and when you go down south, and you go to Carlisle, Biglerville, I was there this weekend, their secondary roads are better than our primary roads, there's no, there's no patches in them, there's no big bumps in them, they're all taken care of, and it's because they don't have the weather conditions that we have, they don't get to constant frost and thaw, we get up here, but they should be calculating that into their funding stream, saying, the roads up north will last a lot less than the roads in the south, so we need to send adequate funding to maintain the roads in the north.
And what about factoring in that we're fracking, gas fracking county, and we have thousands of industry trucks to calving these roads, which the southern part of Pennsylvania does not have?
Well, and, and, you know, that is, of course, an argument that you could place, but the other thing that they do have in that area down there is, they do have a lot of, a lot more truck traffic in that area, other than water trucks, so their truck traffic, especially in the Apple Orchards, the tractor trailers, you know, Mott's factory down there, and a few of the other ones, the tractor trailers, it's unbelievable the amount of truck traffic they have, but their roads stand up to us, so that tells me that apparently their roads got built correctly, where our roads didn't.
Now, what about one sixty-seven south, how do you feel the new roads have been built?
Well, one sixty-seven south is still a huge problem, I mean, it's nice to put lipstick on a pig, and make it know the road looked nice, but I think it was two weeks ago, Mr. Diaz lost a two-hundred-thousand-dollar truck on that road, the white line is in the ditch, and when the truck had to move over because of a vehicle coming the other way, and got on the edge of the road, it sucked in right down to the ditch and totaled the truck, ran the truck. So, when the ditches are right on the white line, that's a huge problem, and, you know, luckily, it was a truck, and the driver didn't get hurt, but if it had been a car that went off in that ditch and then hit the, the drain culver, probably somebody could have been killed in it, you know, it's a four to five-foot drop.
So they didn't fill in the ditches, are they supposed to fill them in?
No, 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 they're, they're for drainage, so, but if you're going to do that, then you'd have guardrails, so people, you know, I mean, especially in the wintertime, you know, the snow builds up high enough in the wintertime, and that ditch is going to fill with snow, it's going to look like everything's good, and somebody goes off the edge of the road, and it's all snow, and everything's fine, they're going to go right down in the ditch and be buried in the snow, it'll spring.
Now, can he sue the state for the damages?
You can't sue them, no.
And, okay, thank you, and then also, I was wondering, how's the water line to the jail coming along?
Actually, we're getting some good progress, if you remember, months ago, the county said that they were adding up seven hundred and fifty thousand to try... try and get this thing moving. We now have got some confirmation back that the water company themselves is going to put over $300,000 into the project. And also that it looks like we will be able to secure some funding out of Harrisburg over, around $300,000 and a couple other investors for $200,000, $300,000 more. So our portion will be significantly lower than what we anticipated. So we're hoping to have everything all worked out by the end of this year and go to permits over the wintertime because as usual, we'll have to go to Penda to get permits and that takes forever with them. So we hope that by spring, if we can get all these permits in place, then we should be able to get this water line done. And with that, of course, we're now looking at one section of land down there where someone is looking to invest and put a seven to nine million dollar operation in. And then there's another 50-acre piece down there that another company's looking at to take and come into the area and possibly put jobs in there.
And that's all near the Bendix Superfund site?
No, we're staying away from that now. The college at one time was interested in going there, but it was interested and now everybody's backed away from it, so.
Did they give a reason?
They just couldn't come to an agreement between all the attorneys.
Now, the other companies that are coming in there, do they have to stay a certain distance from the superfund area?
Well, they'll be out of the superfund area.
And do you know what that distance is?